Good evening. Hope you all are doing well. I call this meeting to order.
That's what they are today.
And before I turn the meeting over to Mr. Murphy, I'd like to read my disclosure for my conflict of interest statement. I'm an employee of the City of Charlottesville within the City Parks and Recreation Department. I hereby declare that during the city council's discussion of the proposed budget relative to issues relating to city employees such as cost of living increases, living wages, health insurance benefits, and similar fiscal matters related to city employees individually and collectively referred in this written disclosure as a transaction, I may have a personal interest in the transaction as the term is defined by Virginia Code 2.23101 by reason of salary or compensation or employee benefit that I receive as a city employee in excess of $5,000 annually. I previously consulted with the Office of the City Attorney on this matter and received an opinion that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3112B1, even with the personal interest, I may lawfully participate in the city council's discussion of the transaction because I am a member of a group of three or more person city employees, the members of which are affected by the transaction. I hereby affirm that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. And I turn the meeting over to Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, members of council. We're here for a budget work session this evening to really focus on the capital improvement program. We will be going into a number of items that we discussed in our session last Thursday, and of course, we'll determine at the end how staff needs to follow up from this meeting and have some public comment. Our budget meetings come out, and we'll hit this again at the end, but I do want to reinforce the schedule that we're on right now. We do have a big public forum on Saturday. We have six public hearings on the council agenda for Monday night, four of which are budget-related, and then we do have another budget session next Tuesday night. I look forward to spending lots of time with you all. We are going to have Mr. Davidson now launch us into the CIP.
All right. So, we're gonna just begin with a few summary slides on the CIP, one for revenue and one for expenses, and then we'll go through the projects kind of broken out specifically, and if you have any questions about them, we can talk through them then. We will not go over the unfunded list specifically, but if you have any questions, feel free to bring them up, or you can wait till the end after we've gone through all the projects to talk about them then. First chart, just to kind of just give you an idea of where the funding for the CIP comes. As you see, two-thirds of this is from our general, is from bonds, and then the next biggest portion, about 20% from the general fund. This slide really just showing where the expenses are going, affordable housing being the largest, followed by transportation, education, and public safety. So, as part of the CIP process each year, we meet with the planning commission for a work session and then a public hearing and get their feedback on the proposed CIP. For this year, this was their one recommendation that they had. They approved the CIP with the one specific recommendation, as you all are aware, and we've talked about this, and we'll have another slide about this at the end as well. There have been a couple changes to the CIP that I wanted to point out from the, since last time we saw this was at the planning commission. We've added the schools reconfiguration project, changed the timing on the general district court project to match up with the county. We had increased the IT strategic infrastructure and then reduced some projects, and we'll talk about those when we get to those specific slides as well.
What was the amount of the general district court that was moved, that funding?
It was, it was 3.18, roughly 3.2 million, and we initially had that in FY '20 and '21, and to match up with the construction timing, we just pushed that out one year, so it's in '21 and '22. So, we didn't add any funding or reduce any funding, we just changed the timing on that one.
Just to clarify, the city's total share for that court project is 6.8 or 6.9 million.
Yep. Here is our revenues. As I said before, the largest piece is coming from bonds, about 22.7 million, six and a half, or 6.7 from the general fund. We have some year-end appropriation, and we actually looked and reprogrammed some existing capital balances to help reduce our need for other bonds. But as you can see, 35.1 million in FY '20 and 128.5 million over the five-year period for our CIP is what we're proposing. So, when you sell, so I want to talk about debt service for a second. When you sell bonds, you have to pay for them, and based upon our proposed CIP as it stands right now, we're looking at an increase of $850,000 in debt service in FY ' '20 and each year in our debt projection moving forward, that having that exact increase every single year. Again, this is based on our proposed CIP and doesn't factor in any additional projects outside of these, and those projects, as project amounts change or we add projects, that would again affect this, this amount and the debt service percentages, which as of right now, within the current CIP and the proposed budget as it stands with the additional increases, keeps us under the 10% cap and the 9% target. So, we're gonna start off with our bonded projects. We have education and our facilities projects here on this slide. Again, the total five-year CIP of 128.5 million, but there is 110 million worth of unfunded, and many of these proposed projects will have an impact on the operational budget, but we'll discuss that at the very end. And the biggest change here, as we already talked about, was the $3 million that we added for the schools reconfiguration and design and planning, and then the other large increase we had here was for the schools priority improvement projects, which we increased about $250,000 a year. And the last note on this is there are several areas throughout the CIP where we reduced or removed some funding for projects based on existing balances in order to spend those down and use those existing dollars first before we add more money.
And this is taking into account the reconfiguration plan, and if the schools, if some of these dollars were going towards those schools, have we had that conversation with?
We have, but as I have understood it, and is Mr. Oberdorfer here with me tonight? Yes, he is. So, the dollars that go into the schools are basically to really overhaul one grade's worth of classrooms each year, and then to do some improvements in some of the other grade classrooms. And I don't think that there's anywhere in this CIP that we move out of the elementary schools. Am I generally right on that, Paul? Yes. So, this, this plan would, would be a continuation of those big classroom upgrades only in elementary schools, and so, since we're talking about potentially reconfiguring both Walker and Buford, it wouldn't be that we would gain any money there.
And the HVAC replacement, that's still elementary?
Those are aging systems that definitely need to be done.
Yeah, that's system-wide.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, this project, excuse me, we have the public safety. The only project we have proposed is a bypass fire station, and we had a question from one of the councilors about looking at a potential renovation as opposed to a replacement of this station. Wanted to point out, the 3.7 million we have in here is the second half of the funding for this. We've already allocated, council's already allocated about $2.2 million for this project, where we reallocated existing CIP funds and consolidated those for this project. Realistically, for the, since this is a bonded project, we'd really need to look at the debt service we would save if we reduced this, and it's really around the neighborhood of $80,000 per year for every million dollars that you reduce out of the project. And, you know, in speaking with our facilities people and our fire people, the feasibility on this, it really was, we were looking at going from 3,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, so we would still need to add on the square footage because there's certain issues that wouldn't be met through renovation. Specifically, the bays are not large enough to handle the current equipment. There's gender equality issues as far as dormitories and some other ADA issues and some ingress and regress, egress issues that would not be dealt, and if you did this, we'd still have to basically gut the existing station and then add on 7,000 square feet to that 3,000 square foot, and you're kind of really limiting what the architect could do with that, and again, still not addressing a lot of the issues. So, just wanted to, we did the research and just wanted to point that out, since we hadn't been able to provide that information to you yet, figured this was an appropriate opportunity to be able to do that.
Well, thank you, and I didn't realize this was a second half of already, I didn't remember that. Thanks.
So, moving along, excuse me, here's our transportation and access projects. There are a few minor adjustments, some slight increases to the sidewalk projects. We shifted $50,000 from SIA down into the small area plans to move, to move that project along a little bit quicker, and the biggest reduction I wanted to point out was to the streets milling and paving. This was reduced, requested by 50% to allow for the department to kind of catch up on the backlog of maintenance work with the existing funds and allow for some of the, some of those dollars to go towards the sidewalk work and the ADA ramps and those types of things. And the one new project on this slide is the state revenue sharing match, and that's the city's match to match some previous funding commitments for some multimodal improvements, sidewalks, bike lanes, roads, those type of things that we had committed to with VDOT previously. Again, if you have any questions on any of these as we're going through, feel free to stop, if not, we can talk about them all at the end. Looking at parks and recreation, this, the largest one is in Darden Towne here, and it's the city's share of the cost for the jointly-owned Darden Towne, and this funding was to match what's in the county CIP and represents the city's portion of the lighting and turfing of the fields at Darden Towne. As it stands right now, the last time I checked, it was still in the county CIP. I know they're getting a lot of pressure to keep it in from people as well, but they're still considering that, and if, obviously, if they remove that from our CIP, that would allow, from their CIP, that would allow us to, to look at a reduction there as well. And the public housing and redevelopment, this is the bonded portion of the 10.3 million we have allocated in FY '20 CIP for affordable housing projects.
So, they're planning, it's within the next year, they were planning to start that project at Darden Towne? I'm sorry, I just, as part of the CIP conversation, I remember Chair Green, who has intimate knowledge of that, it just seemed like, it seemed a lot of uncertainty around the timing of that.
There's, I believe there's still some uncertainty around the timing of that, but I don't know.
And I realize-
Brian Daley is here.
And I realize it's, it's bondable, and I don't understand the value of that, it's not like it's gonna-
Part of it is, we have to have the, when they start, you have to have the money on hand, we can't issue contracts without that, so.
That's correct. My understanding is the project has yet to be funded. No design work has been done, any of that sort of, the project is sort of waiting for that commitment to move the projects forward.
But as the Vice Mayor's point, who's on the bonded side, I think the delta on this for the budget for '20 is maybe $75,000.
It's in there, it's in the county's budget, but obviously, nothing's been approved as of yet on that side.
One question for Mr. Daley, sorry. For the Tonsler Park master plan implementation that goes through smoothly and whatnot, can, because I've been getting a lot of questions about this, and I just figured I'd ask you now, what is the, the process for that? Like, where are we? What do we?
We've been implementing the master plan over the last several years.
Piece by piece, right.
The circumferential trail, the removal of the outfield fence, the construction and opening of the spray ground last summer, the reconstruction of the basketball courts and new lights. We've been implementing the master plan over the last several years. We have a project balance currently that will allow us to continue working forward and get an RFP on the street to do the design for the fieldhouse, and it's our expectation that within the next 18-month window, the funding that we have on hand today is sufficient to keep those projects moving forward without anything in the next CIP.
Got you.
Okay.
Just wanted to mention, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So, now we're gonna switch over to the non-bonded projects, the cash side of the equation, and wanted to point out, I mentioned that there are a few projects where we had reduced some balances and eliminated some funding, and there's three such projects on this, the state bridge inspections, the cat bus, and the economic development. This is not eliminating those projects, but they had sufficient balances to carry forward, at least for one year, if not two years on a lot of those. Couple, the two new projects we have on this particular slide are the traffic sign retro reflective compliance and the ADA ramp corrections. The compliance is to ensure we're meeting the regulations from the federal highway and safety, I believe it's federal highway, and then ADA ramps, that's just updated, the ramps that have been updated recently to kind of fix any issues that we have had on those, on these corrections. We also have about $200,000 in the sidewalk repair fund, and that is for, to move in front of the paving list to correct and update any ramps before we pave those streets, make sure that those are corrected before we do any paving on those particular streets.
So, the cat, the transit bus replacement match, that was one of the ones that was changed?
Yes, that had, that has a, had a large balance in there from, we had overbudgeted some match in previous years, several, several years ago, and so there was still a balance left of unallocated funds that we felt was enough to be able to cover what our match needs would be. We have a 4% match on any of the buses and bus-related purchases. Any stop enhancements and things like that are solely on us, but we felt that based on what was in that account, we could handle that for the next couple of years, plus the FTA changed some regulations on when you could replace buses, which pushed our scheduling out a little bit more, kind of elongated our schedule on replacements, so.
I have a general question about the process that you follow, because you're talking about these accounts, which obviously, we're not seeing them here, it's a lot of detail, of vetting through each of those accounts to understand if there is excess dollars, what is the process for kind of vetting through? Do we need those excess dollars in the future, and if not, we then put them back into the bigger part, just so that we all can be clear on what that process is?
Sure. Every year, we go through a, we call it a CIP cleanup and a spend rate analysis, and we send out every project that has a, an existing balance in the CIP, we send out the list to those departments and ask, how much money do you plan to spend over the next six months and to a year? Figure out what they need, when the project is scheduled to be, if it can be closed down, if this is truly savings, if there are longer-term planning issues that need to be dealt with. All those things are looked at, and then this year, we were able to identify roughly $1.8 million worth of balances or projects that were no longer needed and have kind of reprogrammed those dollars, and we'll reprogram those dollars as part of this CIP in order to reduce the amount of cash and bonds that we needed, as well as, like I said, we're pointing out, there's a few projects where we were able to have a one-to-two-years' worth of savings or more on those balances. But, yeah, it's an annual thing that we look at each year to make sure that we're not building up balances that can't be, that are just sitting there and not being spent because they can't get the work done, so.
And the, so the bottom two were added, the traffic sign and the ADA ramp, were there the reductions in two others above that?
Had you moved out the stuff you said for the-
Yeah, I mean-
State bridge and highway.
Part of it was the state bridge inspections, bridge and highway inspections. Again, we had roughly what equated to two to three years' worth of funding left in that account, so that's done on a contract amount, so we, it's not that we're not going to inspect the bridges, we're still gonna, gonna do that, but we're able to use those balances to be able to, to do that. And then, again, transit bus replacement was reduced, and the economic development strategic initiatives are also areas that, that were reduced for these years.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you give an example of an economic development strategic initiative?
I'll turn my, I'll turn that question over to Mr. Engler, Director of Big Dumb Development.
So, the most visible example in recent time would probably, probably be the first portion of Hillsdale Drive where Whole Foods is located. Before that was funded by the state, the city created that stub of the road to allow the Whole Foods to come into play.
Oh, okay.
That was about $2 million. This account has existed for many, many years, and it's been used for a variety of things, but that's, that's a recent example. Another example is the, the former Market Plaza West Second Undergrounding Utility Project had a city component and a developer component, and the city component came primarily from this investment fund, but also a portion of it came from the undergrounding fund.
I see.
So, just two examples of how that's-
So, it's almost like a contingency fund?
Not necessarily contingency, but looking for opportunities that we can leverage in the future strategically. So, the Whole Foods example, Hillsdale Drive example is a good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there we go. All right. Moving on, the parks and recreation projects here, the biggest funding, the biggest change I wanted to point out here was we took, moved the funding from the Trails and Greenway and the Parkland acquisition projects and kind of combined those into one project, increased it by roughly $50,000 a year to allow Parks and Recreation to prioritize their greatest needs on these and provide some additional funding to help address those priorities. We have a lot of trails projects that are currently out there that going for grants and all of those types of things, so we, we wanted to give them some flexibility on that, on that front by combining those. Again, we reduced the, as part of the departmental reductions, Parks and Recreation submitted the refurbishing of the parks restrooms and the parks, schools, and playgrounds as reductions for one year. There's currently, the balances will allow us to still do the work in there, but by reducing that, we were able to reduce, directly reduce our cash funding needs into this CIP by about $160,000. So, that was one of the reductions that we've been talking about, when we talk about our $1.3 million plus of those reductions. And the one project, new project on here I wanted to point out was the downtown mall infrastructure repairs. We have a dedicated revenue stream from the mall vending permits that we're now transferring into this CIP to help provide a source of funding for the various mall infrastructure maintenance needs, such as like the drainage runnels and some work that could help, potentially help alleviate some issues with some of the crossings, and that's what this fund would help to do.
So, the permits are funding the entire $125,000 per year?
Yes, ma'am. We have, yeah, we have a dedicated, that funding used to be part of the general fund, and now it's being transferred into the CIP, and that's what we're projecting right now as the, the revenue for, for the next couple of years.
Could you explain what the Parks and Recreation lump sum account is?
Several years ago, I believe it was four, five, you got, Brian, you can come up as well, but there is a lot of smaller projects, such as some ADA access issues, some modernization projects, very small projects that were being submitted, so we created the, this lump sum account to allow them to address these issues as opposed to submitting 20 projects at $50,000 apiece or $75,000 apiece, and this gives them, they also, in the past, had been until we created the joint city-county parks projects, have been paying for a lot of those out of this lump sum account as well, so those are a few of the examples. I don't know if you want to elaborate some more.
Sure. There are smallish projects that really don't, in isolation, rise to the level of capital funding. It could be access control in a park to keep vehicles away from, you know, playgrounds or grassy areas. It could be repairs to restroom doors or additional playground surfacing, and a number of very minor projects that fall into that lump sum category that allows us to provide some flexibility and prioritization as, over the course of the year. And to Ryan's point, we had been paying for the city's commitment, the city's portion of commitments for repairs of facilities at Ivy Creek Natural Area and a couple of things at Darden Towne out of this account, which now will be funded elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This is the last slide on the, the bondable side here, and this is, so here's our Charlottesville affordable housing dollars, which were reallocated to the other affordable housing projects. This is the cash funded side, roughly 7.3 million, and then our other governmental projects. We have our, our second year of our commitment to the senior center and the third year of our, of the city's portion of the commitment to the site work at the PVCC Advanced Technology Center, and then some funding here for the, to begin the, to study and design and plan that some, for the city yard environmental remediation.
Is, is there a, a schedule for the city yard remediation, or is that, is that something that has any movement to another year?
I don't, I don't think we're there yet, because Brenda Kelly and Crystal Rittergold are working with the EQ on some grant programs. This is that first phase where we would need to do some of that work with the state, and then the dollar figure, when you went into an action phase, would be very different than this, this amount.
So, so just the investigation alone is costing $300,000?
There's a lot of site testing that needs, you want to come up, Paul? Yes, I, I do believe that there is quite a, quite a number of expenditures that, not limited just to testing, though.
Yeah, correct. So, the $300,000 would cover the initial testing and research into the existing conditions. It may not even cover, that would be like phase one. Depending what they find, it could take subsequent phases, it would also have to be considered for funding.
So, the reason why I ask is because that's the only, this is the only year that there's money in that line item, it's over a five-year capital program, so it didn't seem like there was any other bigger plan attached to this, and I was asking, can that, can this year be moved to '21? I mean, is, is there any urgency about having that done this year?
Well, the, the reason it's in here is I believe that council has had some desire to investigate the conditions of the yard for development purposes, so.
And that's understandable. I just wanted to know.
So, why it's in here now is for that reason. Why there's no dollars behind it is I view this the same way that I view the money with the schools. When you start talking about a significant potential expenditure, there's no reason for me to throw a dart at the wall, right? I know there's big money that could follow this, but we won't know until we spend the investigation money.
I understand that.
Same way with the $3 million for the schools, because the range has been anywhere to 1 to 6 million quoted to me, so I don't know how to program that in here at this stage.
But is the minimum put somewhere? Like, if it's not here during this budget cycle, we know that we will be spending at least, right, a dollar amount.
Well, I think the other question that we would need to ask ourselves down the road is if it rises to a certain level, you know, is it possible as part of other projects that it goes on to the bonded side instead of on this cash side? So, no, and then the impact of those dollars would be a lot less at, you know, ballpark 80,000 per million, right?
And just to be clear, because these are non-bonded, non-bonded projects, if we take any line item off, it is a one-for-one dollar takeoff. It's not like, it's not, there's no debt service, where we're, we're really only saving a smaller amount of money per year?
As a matter of budget balancing exercise, anything on this sheet would be a direct debit against other-
Okay.
-projects that are currently funded.
Thank you.
And because I know I've asked you, and we've talked about it for the public's benefit, it's my understanding that Friendship Court could be programmed over more than one year, but could you just share your concern with, with taking that approach?
Sure. So, I, I think in general, we need to think about what's the likely trajectory of the budget and what's our typical revenue growth year over year. We know that the budget itself is gonna add debt in roughly 800 to 850,000 per year, so that's one expense. If we look over the past, you know, five to 10 years, we give the schools on average, you know, $2.5 to $3 million a year, so we'll round that and call it, you know, we're at $4 million. The operating budget on the local government side may be different by about $2 million. That would be just over 1% growth, right? So, we're at $6 million when we get to starting this exercise eight months from now, and, you know, if I say, and Mr. Mathon has said, look, we can make it work timing-wise for our construction project to do $3 million and $3 million, but instead of starting at $6 million in the hole and maybe 3, 3.5% budget growth, revenue growth in the city, then I'm at $9 million, and I'm talking about 4.5% to 5% revenue growth in the city, it makes me feel a little different. So, you know, our budget team, potentially with the new city manager, would be $9 million in the hole with that strategy, and that's why I was reluctant to do it that way.
Thank you.
All right, clicker's not working, sorry. All right, there we go. All right, and the last slide we have on the CIP before we get into the larger discussion points is the operational impacts. Based on what we have in the proposed CIP, we're estimating a five-year operational impact of about 1.24 million. There's more details on, on exactly what, how we came to these figures in the city manager's budget, but it's everything from utility increases and decreases, maintenance costs, all of those types of things, and so just wanted to point out that as we talk about these projects, we need to also keep in mind the operational impact that they may have as you increase or decrease the size and scope of them, so. Now, I will turn it over, turn it back over to Mr. Murphy. And now I will turn it back, turn it back over to Mr. Murphy.
Dun dun dun.
I don't know if that helped me at all, Dr. Murphy. So we've, we've made a presentation on these items. I think that they're the most significant outstanding questions before the staff and council. Based on our discussions leading up to and including last Thursday. I know that there have been many suggestions from the public and questions asked by council about different ways to generate dollars or cut dollars from the budget. Some of those have an impact on our fiscal standing. And for that reason, I've asked Kevin Roddy to be here tonight, part of our financial advising firm, to be really specific with council about any questions you have. When we start talking about, why do we have certain fund balances and our debt ratios and all that? The premises upon which I and the budget team have built the budget. And so, you know, I, I would just say, you know, I'm hoping that because we have a number of public hearings on Monday night, that we, we may get towards some solutions on some of these revenue items this evening. And I, I hope that the staff and Mr. I are here to give you enough information that we can get there. And with the spirit of, I believe that you don't want to be the council who is in place when we lose our AAA standing. And I don't want to be the city manager when that happens, right? So I do want to be fiscally responsible. And I think that, you know, we, we want to be very careful about the decisions that come next. So I will defer to the mayor in, in what way, if you want to go one by one about the revenue sources. You want to talk big picture and ask questions of Mr. Roddy since we've asked him to be here. Help me understand what you all would like next.
Yeah, I think the, maybe asking him a few questions first would be.
Sure. That'd be great.
Yeah. Could you spell your last name for me?
R O T T Y.
Sure. Well, thank you for coming. Now, I looked over our long-term financial policies and it was page A9 in the city manager's proposed budget. And policy number one says that we're supposed to maintain a minimum general fund balance of 14% of the general fund budget. When I look at our general fund budget, that's about 188,000, 188.8 million dollars. And so 14% of that to me comes out to be something like 26.4 million dollars, that that's what we have in the reserve fund. So this policy became effective July 1, 2013. And it went, it was an increase from the minimum general fund balance from 12% to 14% to provide sufficient working capital. I was on council then and at that time, I don't recall that there was a dip in our bond rating, that this was considered just to be another precaution, going from 12% to 14%. The policy goes on to further say that it is, this reserve fund is to provide sufficient working capital and a margin of financial safety to address unforeseen one-time expenditures. So that was the, the tip-off for me. We have two one-time expenditures that are acting like capital projects, but they're actually one-time in the budget. And that was the, the Friendship Court redevelopment phase one, 4.4 million. And it was the school reconfiguration at 3 million. So when I know that, this wasn't happening every year for a five-year capital plan, it was one-time money. And I read this policy, it, this policy then says, you, when you take reserve money out, you must replenish it to the 14% level within three years. When I add the 4.4 and the 3 million, that's around 7, 7.4 million, we wouldn't even need to take all of that out because our shortfall is 3.3 million. We always have a fund balance at the end of the year that's, that's over $3 million. And there's every likelihood that we could replenish this general fund reserve within a year. So I, I want to better understand why this particular situation doesn't fall into this category of a one-time expenditure emergency. We did not know, we did not know we were going to have this perfect storm of Friendship Court and the Housing Authority together submitting their Lytec applications. And we didn't know that the schools were really going to move forward with the reconfiguration. They were not, a year ago, we didn't even have these conversations. So I want to understand why doesn't that situation fit into this category? Item number one in our long-term financial policy that then would allow us to go into our reserve, reserve fund, take it out, put it back in. So that's the first question. Second question, and I'm not saying that this is happening or it could be possible, but if there were a commitment from some other entity to cover some of these expenses, would that be a reassurance to the bonding companies that we would indeed replenish those funds?
Okay. I'll start with just a little bit of history. When the, when the 12% went to 14%, that was over a period of time where we were talking about elevating our, our debt limit. Our debt limit used to be 8%. As you recall, we walked that up to a maximum amount of 10% with a, with a target of 9%. So we were trying to, you know, show both sides. We're going to increase our debt, but we're also going to increase our fund balance. The wording of that, of the fund balance, it's really talking about your unassigned fund balance, your, your safety net, if you will. The money that you're, you know, not going to touch is, is what that unassigned fund balance is really there for. So it's, you know, when it says unforeseen expenses, it's really targeting inter-year expenses. Not that you're budgeting to use it on something in a planning exercise. If all of a sudden you're in the middle of a recession, that's why there's the, the next part of that policy is the economic downturn policy, which is 3%. That puts certain parameters on when you're able to access that money. And so that's what those policies are really designed, you know? If, if somebody's running a business, it's like working capital, you know? So that's, that's kind of the amount that you want to have days cash on hand to run your business. And then when there is a turn in the economy or inter-year unforeseen expenses come along, it's, it's there kind of as that last resort.
So can I, Councilor Galvin, could you help me understand why you're looking at these items as one-time expenses?
Because they, they don't recur every year in the capital budget.
But they will, they would just be replaced with funds going to the same projects?
Well, I would hope that though, in the coming year, that we would have a much firmer understanding of what the capital plans will be for the school reconfiguration. And that we will also have a better plan as, as we started having that conversation with the Housing Advisory Committee. As to what the, every year, what our bond commitment, our capital commitment will be to, to expand our public and assisted housing program. But we don't have that yet, nor have we had a time to go out into the community, explain to them exactly what this money is being used for. So that's where I'm coming from. Why I'm looking at this is, is this is a one-time cash moment.
So unless we're not going to make the commitment to those three items, we know that they are long-term investments.
But we don't want the, we don't know what those long-term investments are going to be.
We don't know the dollar amount, but we know the range is pretty steep.
But we haven't plugged that in.
We haven't plugged that in, but we know that we, there will be numbers for us to plug in.
All I'm saying is that they're unknown right now because we're raising taxes to gain money every year, every year on something we, we don't have hard figures on. That's, and that's all I'm saying.
But I think from what we do know, we know that the amount won't be less than the amount that we're seeking to fulfill this year.
I, I do feel that it would be important, if at all possible, that we can communicate to our public what those monies are year after year that we're spending the tax dollars on. Right now, all we're seeing is one-time money. And that's why I'm raising these questions.
If I may, Mayor Walker, a couple thoughts, you know? If council wanted to entertain the idea of going backwards from 14 to 12, then I think this is a complex set of variables. We should also simultaneously talk about rolling back the debt to 8% instead of 10 and the target from where it is, which means going further into the CIP. And while one-time is one of the clauses in here, so is unforeseen and so is decline in revenues. We don't have a decline in revenues. All our revenues are up, right? And it's not unforeseen. We've been planning for redevelopment, talking and hoping for redevelopment for a long time. The Friendship Court project, we've been on a committee for a couple of years. For Housing Authority, we've talked about it as long as I've worked for the city.
Which is how many years?
A long time.
I just wanted to.
Since my hair was red and there was more of it. How about that?
So long.
Long enough.
Decades.
1991.
No, sir.
No, no, I mean 1991 is when we have Housing Authority documents that stated when we first started talking about redevelopment.
I'm not, I'm not arguing about the knowledge or a lack of knowledge about housing redevelopment. I'm talking about the actual figures of knowing what that's going to cost and then planning ahead with a tax policy that then pays for that debt. We don't have those hard numbers at this point, or even estimated numbers to carry us on across a five-year capital budget. And that's all I'm saying. And that's very unusual that we would raise taxes on something that is hypothetical, that we don't have those numbers yet.
And I agree. I have, I have similar concerns. And I also was curious, what other benchmarks are there? Because I, I recognize, you know, what you've laid out in terms of the increase of the debt limits. Are there other, others that you can kind of just point to that, what are their percentages? And then what are their debt limits in terms of just numbers, just so that we can kind of have a point of comparison? I just don't want to look at this in a vacuum.
Yeah, no, those are, you know, we tried to, for your policies, tried to, those are the two primary. You're trying to keep your debt service as a percent of, you know, your budget and your expenditures. And, and then your fund balance at a certain level. Other, other communities will have one, like debt as a percent of assessed value or debt per capita. But, you know, at the end of the day, those are the two primary ones that the rating agencies are most closely focused on.
And as I looked at the numbers, if we took $3 million out of the general fund reserve, they would still leave 12.5% of a reserve fund in the budget. And then again, I don't see how that, would that affect our AAA bond rating?
You would be, you would be consciously violating, you know, the policy. The rating agency reports, they talk about, you know, they cite it as one of your, your core fundamentals. You've given them your pledge that we understand the importance of this and we're going to maintain that. And so that would be, that would be, you know, a fire alarm going off with them that we'd have to explain what's going on. I'll give the cautionary tale of the Commonwealth of Virginia has been a longtime AAA entity. Standard and Poor's came through and put them on a negative credit watch saying, if you keep using your general fund balance, your rainy day fund, when it's not raining, the sun is out, your revenues are fine. And you keep using it because you don't want to balance your budget, we're going to lower your rating. And so it took the General Assembly a couple of years and, you know, S and P said, you do it one more time, we're serious, your rating's going down. And the General Assembly in the, in the last session said, okay, we're going to balance, balance our budget. And we're going to stop using our, our fund balance to, to in essence, balance our budget.
So that option is not a good one.
That, that's the, you know, that's kind of the one thing that would be sticky. The, you know, the one thing you mentioned about year-end surplus, using that and dedicating that. It's, it's, to me, that's a little bit of, you know, something you could certainly consider, but let the, let the surplus actually occur. And then as you're making that decision, you know, as to whether you do it or not, as, as you balance other priorities. But kind of putting in the IOU, if this happens, we'll replenish this. And you're, you know, borrowing from your fund balance ahead of that, which is going to cause concern. Because you're putting, you're putting that, that balance at risk ahead of knowing the results.
And that was actually the next point I was trying, I was actually interested in going to is hypothetically speaking, if we said that, you know, the same amount that I was saying we could put up for Friendship Court over two years, is that same amount, half of that amount? Something that we can say, you know what, we're going to earmark that our surplus, if it comes to fruition, that's what we're going to use these funds for. Because my, my biggest concern is, you can see this playing out, you know, we make some really tough decisions here and we really push on revenues. And we find ourselves in a surplus situation or one of these other projects falls apart. And then we have a community that's looking at us and saying, why did you raise our taxes? And now we're looking at this surplus. And I've heard it happen before and this is all very heightened awareness right now around taxes, given our assessments, especially when the real estate side. And obviously we're hearing from other specific sectors. And I'm just, I just think we have a lot coming ahead of us where those taxes are going to be something we're going to be looking at really hard. And even more significantly in future years, I just want to make sure that the, the timing of those things is coming out when they absolutely have to. And right now, there's just so much uncertainty and I'm, I just, I'm interested in just kind of taking an approach like that.
So I, I said, Ms. Hill, I appreciate your, the cautious approach. However, just some pushback that I would have in regards to that. And specifically when it comes to if our community says, well, why did you raise our taxes and then this project didn't go through? I feel as if, do we not owe it to our community to show that we have the foresight to be willing to put up the funds? To not think about whether or not this is not going to work, but make sure that we are showing these populations, specifically Friendship Court, CRHA, the affordable housing sector of our community, the, the people in our community, our constituents, who have been desperately asking for years for us to do something about this, that in good faith, we're taking this step to make sure that we address their concern. Looking at something from a perspective as if, well, this could go wrong is, is appreciated, but what if it goes right? And I firmly believe that it will go right. And nonetheless, we owe it to our community to put our money where our mouth is because people have been saying over and over and over that we need to address affordable housing. Well, how are we going to pay for it? In order for us to pay for it, we have to make some of these decision points. We can't always take this cautious approach because that just gets us in a standstill and we continue to do what we've been doing, which has clearly been not enough.
But I, I want to, I am, I want to assume that we are going right. And I also, I'm pretty confident that we're going to find ourselves at the end of fiscal year and there's going to be positive dollars that we would be earmarking that are going to go directly to closing this gap. And that's the only thing I'm, I'm, I'm just asking just for the discussion. I'm, I'm talking about hypothetical.
Yeah, I have, I have the, I have the same question, which is just, is that a, whether it's best practice or not, is that a practice? Can a council, when it's making budgetary decisions, look ahead toward the surplus and say, our strategy is to, you know, instead of doing that scrum at the end of the year, we are going to allocate whatever surplus surfaces and that's the decision we make now.
But the surplus isn't guaranteed.
I'm, I, I understand that. I'm just asking, could we say, that, that's my question. Could we say that whatever surplus there is, and it would make it contingent, obviously. So it's a different kind of budgetary practice. But is that something that cities do?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that's y'all's independent decision within your, within your budgetary process of if there is a surplus at the end of the year, how you, how you wish to spend that. So I think that's, you know, an exercise y'all go through, through annually. You know, so I'm really just cautioning to not, you know, budget below your policies. But what you do with the excess and then the contingency plans, if it doesn't realize, then you've got to, you know, make your decisions on, on what projects you're funding or not, not funding if you are sort of programming in that revenue source.
And so could you all remind us what the sur-
And so, could you all remind us what the surplus has been spent on, maybe the last year or two?
So, last, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Chrissy.
Last year, it was three point two million dollars, which we programmed back into the CIP for these housing projects.
So, of the ten point three million dollars that you see in this budget for affordable housing in twenty, three point two of it is from your December appropriation. A million dollars for August twelfth expenses, and some smaller... Retirement, yeah.
So, every year that I, and I've been paying attention for a lot of years, that those surplus dollars have been going to items that were in the budget, that were on the CIP list, that hadn't been funded yet. So, the money is not just sitting somewhere. So, if we have the discussion that we're having, if we try to allocate the funds from the surplus, or designate those funds to cover these costs, then we're just going to have this conversation about other items that...
Well, and actually, it's a practical matter. You already have a policy that does that. So, we have a minimum fund balance policy, and anything over and above the minimum, automatically, that money goes to the CIP as part of the contingency. So, you're already doing that, as long as you don't allocate another part of the surplus.
But I, so I think the difference about what we're talking about, again, and I don't have an opinion now about what we would contingently allocate the surplus to. This is getting more specific. My question is just, could we do it? Because what we have done, last year was really unusual. That was saying, "We're going to not just put it to kind of the cascading unfunded CIP", which is a policy, it was saying, "We have these really, you know, very important, you know, this time in our history, affordable housing-related expenses. So, we're not just going to allocate it, because we've got, how many unfunded CIP projects? A hundred, right?
Hundred and ten million.
Yeah. So, and it is very confusing for the public, because what we see in this budget here is we have allocated significant amounts of money to a couple of projects that have kind of, that we've moved ahead of the line for lots of really important equity reasons. But we could do the same thing with the surplus, I guess, is the question. Do we? That's what we're talking about. So, it was really unusual last year, because the prior years, when I was on, we just sent it toward the CIP. That was the policy. But it's, it is, um, anyway.
I mean, I think those, I think y'all's points are well taken. We just, we're going to have to do something.
And I just want to clarify, we're not talking about not funding the housing projects. We're all committed to funding it. We're asking, what is the best way to do it? And a way that, if we can avoid raising taxes on our residents and on our businesses, we would like to try to pursue that. But we are a hundred percent committed, at least I am, to funding the affordable housing projects. That's all we're talking about. I'm not saying in theory. I'm saying we are.
No, if we don't cut, so when we have conversations about cutting items or not adding items, we get nowhere with those discussions either. The same room is filled. Individuals come up to the mic, and they want to have discussions about why we need to keep funding either at current levels or more. And those discussions in the past year, and even before that, we continue those funding streams. Now, we have a situation where it's increased taxes. People who, there are people who are saying, "Sure, increase taxes, if that means." There's a significant number of people saying, "I don't know why I should have to support this." If we don't cut, or we don't increase, it's only in theory.
All I'm saying is that if, for example, we were giving three million dollars every year for five years in a capital program to the city schools, I would understand the tax rate increase. If we were giving money every year to Friendship Court, that was four point four million dollars in the capital budget, I would understand why we're raising the taxes. I'm only seeing it one column, one year. It looks like one-time money to me. And we're raising taxes for something that is a one-time cash investment.
But Kathy, you're on the Friendship Court Committee, and I don't know if anyone's here to maybe explain to us that it's not a one-time...
Mayor Walker, I am not saying I'm not wanting to fund Friendship Court. I'm wanting to figure out the best way to do it.
So, a couple of thoughts. One is that regardless of how the surplus is used, and whether you have a policy, just want to be clear, it's a separate policy. You'll be voting on the budget, you know, separately, right? They aren't going to be wedded to one another. You have a policy about how the surplus happens now. And so, you would be altering that policy about how it moves to the contingency. A couple questions. One is, if the Friendship Court, CIP was structured in the way that Ms. Hill prompted the question from me, so that you saw the recurring cost, because that would be four out of the five years, right? Would it have made more sense to you than that there was a tax increase?
Plus, you said they weren't bonded, so...
Yeah, well, that, that we're clear on, for sure. And of course, Mr. Roddy can confirm that, the research we did on that. The other question is, part of the argument I heard was that, you know, we don't know if they'll get approved. And so, this would be the first time, I think I raised this with you all earlier in the week, that I've heard that the council's support for CRHA or Friendship Court was contingent upon the success of getting nine percent light tech credits. Because I have understood that they've showed us numbers for both nine percent and four percent, which are basically guaranteed, that there's a delta there, they'll have a big gap. But I have always imagined that the council supported those projects regardless of what their funding ended up being from light tech, so...
That's where I stand.
And so, to me, that part of the equation, I'm not sure that I understand. We know what the construction costs are. On the Housing Authority side, this is not just as a staff person, but as my personal analysis of it would be that the three million dollars in that first year is a good expense for the city if all that happens is that they move forward with Crescent Halls right now. So, I'm for that, whether they get four percent or nine percent, right? Like, I don't get one of the five votes, but I would think that we know what the situation's been there. We've known for long enough that that, you know, maybe they have to use more of the philanthropy. Maybe they need to get more philanthropy, but that three million dollars from the city is a good investment either way. And the Phase One for Friendship Court is a well-designed, great engagement project. And so, if they get four percent instead of nine percent, or the four percent, nine percent split, I mean, does that mean that we're less interested in it? This is the first I've heard that, so I need to understand, because we may need to think about that, how we've planned.
Well, we haven't even seen numbers, though, that shows that delta. So, all I'm looking at is the four point four million plus whatever, and then the three million. So, I'm just going based on the numbers I'm seeing. So, I just want to ask another question to everybody. And I don't, I'm going back to the possibility of getting someone to donate or contribute. And I'm thinking, when Mr. Signer and I were working on the Planning and Coordinating Council, we were able to get the university to contribute five million dollars to the West Main Street project. What if something like that happened? Would that make a difference to our calculations right now?
Of course, I'd treat that just like cash.
But it would be one-time cash?
Right.
So, Kathy...
I just want to get an idea, or I want to understand.
But, I mean, people are not, like, you know, showing up in droves to donate to Friendship Court or CRHA. So, we have someone that's committed this time, but I don't know how you all run your budgets at home, but it's based on, you know, what's coming in and what's going out. I mean, I don't think you say, "Hope my grandfather gives me an infusion of cash this year." So, it's a very, like, those what-ifs, like, thank you if they happen. But that's not how people run their budgets. You can't do a what-if. It has to be, it's numbers, it's facts. My line item's pretty clear, to keep my household afloat. So, I know in the city, we're, it's a much bigger budget. There are a lot more line items. But these what-if questions, yes, it would be nice if someone donated. Yes, it would be nice if the government, the governor's initiative to fund affordable housing comes through, and there's more dollars allocated, because they say that's one of their priorities. And maybe those dollars could go somewhere else, but we, they are all what-ifs. And so, I think then you just make, we have to make a decision. And all of that is, it'll, it only comes up if it becomes a factor.
And my challenge for me right now is that every time that I've seen us raise taxes, it was to pay for ten more police officers, or to cover ongoing debt service, to pay for a shortfall in a annual deficit in the city schools. That's what happened in 2015. So, when we raised taxes, we knew that those were going to be, like, costs that would always show up in our operating budget. What is so different to me this year is that these are costs showing up in our capital budget, and they're not even bondable. They're non-bondable. And that's why I'm raising these questions. And every time that I've seen taxes go up, it was to cover, basically, a known operational expenditure that we had incurred, because we hired more staff, or we had, there was an ongoing deficit caused by some other level of government not funding the schools. And that's why this seems different to me, and why I've had to kind of go back and lift up this rock again, and make sure that I understand why we're not touching the twenty-six point four million dollars for something that's a one-time contribution right now, when we know it's been our history, that every year, we have from three to eight million dollar surplus at the end of the year, that we know we can meet our policy and replenish. That's all, that's why I'm asking these questions. And I'm getting more answers. This is, again, a very, it's a very conservative budget policy. And I, we don't know, it's, we don't know what it would do to our, our bond rating. I guess the idea is that it could make our bond rating slip down to double A instead of triple A?
So, I have...
Okay. I just want to know. I want to understand.
Okay.
And, thank you. If it's okay, Mayor, I would just say that when we look at, Roman numeral twelve and thirteen in the big, big budget book, you'll see that...
Roman numerals in my book.
Right, that...
Okay, which ones?
We can see, you know, there's over seven million dollars in changes in the operating budget. I mean, we can make this about the Friendship Court, right? And I would encourage you that those operating budgets are important. We've already, you know, trimmed the asks from departments by over a million dollars. I'm not saying that I'd go the other way, but, I mean, it is not quite as simple as saying that the only change that created this is the Friendship Court piece, right? There are other operating budget changes to the tune of over seven million dollars that create this scenario too. It's not just that five point nine million dollars.
So, I think the type of conversation that we may have to have is something along the lines of, like, on the bonded projects, West Main Street improvements. Are we willing to let the amount that's being allocated towards the city from the state level go? Would we say to UVA, "Could you take that five million dollars that you're willing to invest in West Main Street and invest it in affordable housing, which is one of your top priorities?" And then, we can take this three and a quarter million and four million dollars from the next, through fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and then put that in housing, and get, have the conversation with UVA to see, since you've allocated this to West Main Street, President Ryan, would you be willing to look at what the city is saying its current interests are, and invest in that with us? I think those are the kind of, we have to make some decisions about what's important, whether we continue with things as we have been doing them, and try to say, if we can fit these add-ins in, we will, or will we seriously consider, like, "Oh, we thought this was important a few years ago. Maybe now we'll reconsider it." If we're not having those discussions, then we are talking about hypotheticals and theories.
I just want to respond on the one, on the one point. There was, and Council Galvin referred to this earlier, there was a lot of very specific negotiation that went in. Those, the university's agreement to do their contribution to West Main was very narrowly cabboned to lighting and to pedestrian and bike improvements, because that was all, and they went through their Board of Visitors, as I understand. I mean, this was a pretty extensive, like, two-year-long...
But we have a new president. They are thinking differently in the past few years, too.
Okay. I'm just saying that when you're, there is like a path, it's hard to unearth and completely undo something with several years behind it, and commitments, and votes, and a lot of work that went into those, that specific thing. So, it was about lighting and pedestrian improvements that directly pertain to their kid, you know, their students and faculty are using West Main for those reasons. So, that's just how that was.
And it also has gotten state-matching money. And so, it's also, I mean, I'm not here to kind of rob Peter to pay Paul, Mayor Walker. I'm here asking questions to make sure I fully understand why we're going to be at a point where we're going to raise taxes. That's all. And I think we owe it to the public to make sure we can really, fully explain it.
Okay. I agree, because we are the five people that whenever this, some, whatever direction this goes, are going to be hearing from the public. And I know a lot of people have opinions on this, but we are the ones, and we have been hearing from the public across the board with a lot of opinions and perspectives. And I just, I think people have to recognize that we're asking these questions not because we're trying, you're just really trying to unearth what are all of our options. Because I don't want to look back six months from now and say, "We really should have pushed harder on this one thing."
Okay. So, I think, do y'all have any more questions for them? Okay. So, we're at tax increases. So, real estate tax, do you have any?
Well, I'm happy to talk about those things at length, should be necessary. I wonder if it's easier, if we're trying to figure out what number we're trying to get to, if we start with the other two things. And that is, you know, regardless of where you're at on the revenue side, because, you know, that may change, but we're balanced right now. And I'd first like to know, is there anybody who thinks that in addition, we need to add the five hundred thousand for the schools beyond the three point three, and/or add a million or one point five million to the CAF? Because that just kind of continues to impact what the job is when we talk about the revenues. So, or if there's something that we haven't captured on this list, there's another expenditure that is not one of those two things that I've missed.
I'll just say, relative to the schools, I've really tried to follow up, because I feel like from the constituents, I was getting confusion around which number they were asking for us to support. And I follow up with another school board member this week, and I feel like they're asking for the amount they've asked for. And I think that that's what I'm prepared to support, and not this additional. I feel that they have other, there seems like there's some other options for them to close those gaps. And it's up to them to determine what programs they're going to take out of those. And so, I feel like the signal I've gotten from some of those representatives is that that's what they're asking for, is the amount that was put in front of council through your work with Dr. Atkins. That's me.
And I do want to support one million dollars in the CAF as per the Planning Commission recommendation. So, that is going to be putting us to, I guess, a four point three deficit? I keep thinking three point... I do want to do the one million dollars with the CAF personally. I don't, I'm going to accept the school board's request, as they, as per their request last Monday. And no other street infrastructure changes. I had been very concerned about Elliott Street, but we're going to need a long-range plan to figure out how we're going to fund, we have a hundred different corridor and intersection... We have 100 different corridor and intersection projects that need to be dealt with. And we're not making any headway on them by just simply relying on smart-scale funding. But we're not there yet. We don't have that game plan. So I'm not going to be pushing for Elliot Street. All I'm going to be wanting is to put $1 million in our CAF fund in addition to the affordable housing projects that we've been funding in the current budget that you proposed.
I, two for staying with the 3.3 million for the schools, Walton for the $1 million for the CAF. Ms. Hill, did you want to talk about the CAF too?
No, I mean, that's about, among the things that we're looking at contributing to, that would be the first on my list of things I would add to, to our goals.
You would add the million also?
I'm just, but I'm also just trying to bear in mind, what does that mean for the revenue sources? But yes, that is, that would be the priority I have from this list, is getting additional, getting free forming dollars into the CAF fund.
Okay. Is there something that's not on the list?
There's plenty, not on the list, but not that I'm going to entertain this fiscal year.
Thank you for that.
And relative to the CAF, I'd also entertain, is that something we could earmark with a surplus? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what flexibility we have to not dig any deeper in our revenues, new revenues. Anybody else want to add?
I, I haven't changed from my position that I said in the other forums, which is, I don't think that we, the only revenue that I would look at increasing to bridge any delta would be the lodging, which is about $700,000. So-
Yes, sir. On the new, on the new expenditures-
So in terms of driving, like, that's how I'm working my way backward to any, I mean, but not just this, the whole budget. I mean, I, I know that you've done, you know, yeoman's yurk, work finding savings from the agencies to allow these redoubled, you know, six, seven million dollars in affordable housing. And I talked about that before with the Social Services Board and a lot of the others, which I think is not being covered now. But, so I, I, I'm working backward from that, from that preference, I guess, so.
So as a result, you're not looking for any of these other additional things?
No.
So there was the two questions that I had about the, did you all break down the salary?
We sent that, yeah.
Yeah, I sent it yesterday.
Let's see it. And what did the Planning Commission, what was their rationale?
The Planning Commission advocated for the approval of the CIP with an additional million dollars added as funds in the CAF that agencies could apply for, as was traditional in the past version. You know, I just, I know that there is a line in here that says Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, and it has zeros in it, so it's been popular to say it's been zeroed out. I would just want to point out that the city's maximum investment in any year ever was $3.9 million in affordable housing. And then next year, we've suggested 10.3. So by all objective measures, while it's maybe prescriptive about where that money ought to go, nothing was ever zeroed out. So, but I do believe that the Planning Commission and folks from the hack would say, we want some flexible dollars people can apply for. And that's what the million dollars is and how I understand it.
And I do want to just comment, and I've said this before, but to that point, we're over $10 million is a city that we're looking at for next fiscal year with possibly more, depending on how we handle this. And this, it shows a huge commitment and it's clearly a big priority for this council and this community, but this city cannot solve this crisis alone. And when the county only has $800,000 built into their budget for housing, we, we're just carrying the lion's share. And I think through a regional housing assessment, it's going to be very clear that this is not just a city issue, it's a regional issue. And I also believe that the university, and I do believe there's traction, the university is very engaged in this conversation and will be stepping up. But I just, I can't emphasize enough, because we certainly hear from all of you, we get the memos, we have you telling us how we're going to, what revenue streams we should be using to get additional dollars. I want the same pressure to be put on the other jurisdictions that surround us. We cannot do this alone.
So I think that's valid, but I think it's, it's troubling to send a message to our constituents that we're waiting on someone else to do what we need to do for ourselves. Like, and I often live by the Dr. King quote, nobody else can do this for us. Yeah, I think that it's great that Alamo County, they should be doing more, UVA should do more. I sat in a budget meeting and said, we should go to them and tell them they need to provide us with a $50 million check to pay their, pay their share. I've said that several times. But regardless of that, we still have an obligation to do what we're supposed to do for our constituents. And we have to go, in my opinion, to the max. We have to figure out how we are going to go to the max to make up for many of the years in which, just to be honest, we've fallen short. Because if we didn't fall short, we wouldn't be in this situation that we're in now. So it doesn't matter what everyone else is supposed to do, let's do what we're supposed to do.
But we only have so much capacity to do it. And I feel like we certainly, we are doing it, we are committing it.
We are. But I think there's a difference between us having capacity and political will. Because if we have the will, we can do a little bit more. But if we want to be opti, or we want to be cautious, then yeah, we may be at our capacity.
Dr. Melmy, one of the, I guess, one of the pictures in here or pieces of the puzzle is we've canceled two projects in the last year, on the Landmark Hotel and the West Second Street, that would have contributed several hundred thousand dollars a year in sustainable funding toward affordable housing. And that was the agreement that we had with West Second, was that would have established recurring revenue that we would have basically agreed as a body to dedicate exclusively to affordable housing. So we have, you know, I think that the question is when we're, you know, and in this budget, we have increased affordable housing expenses from a little less than $4 million to $10 million. I mean, that's, and now we're having a discussion about, would we increase taxes to go above that doubling of affordable housing expenses in the same envelope of time when we have also canceled these other projects, would have established recurring revenue for a decade? So I think that we just, you know, we need to have the full picture and-
Yes, sir.
But we didn't cancel-
But to that point, we didn't cancel West Second. West, I mean, yeah, West Second, we did eventually get to an agreement. And then after the situation that occurred with the BAR, Mr. Water decided to pull out. So we, as this body in this council, moved forward with that. Now, the landmark, yes, I, I agree with you. And I'm willing to say that I was the vote that was like, nah, I think we need to do more, and it didn't go forth. So I think you're right on that regard, but just to be clear on the West Second, that wasn't us. And I think your points are well taken, but we still, I mean, regardless of that, we still got to do what we got to do now, in my opinion. I mean, I'm not saying you wrong.
Well, I think, but the question is, do we raise taxes or do, you know, creative localities come up with a way to generate revenue, which we had? And the West Second, I mean, that, what happened was at the end of a process where he just decided that he couldn't take it anymore. And that, that's, you know, and B R happened after the end of all that, because we, we added these extra hoops that he had to go through. And I, I don't, I'm, I'm not sympathetic to anything, I'm just saying that's what happened. And so we, we lost a lot of money that could have been dedicated exclusively to preempting the situation that we find ourselves in now. So-
But there was also some fiscal issues that we don't, that the developer had, that we had nothing to do with. And so to put it on us when, whether the project was affordable for him to build at this time, I don't think that's fair. That's not telling the true story that, you know, and I think that's very hurtful overall when we don't share the full story. It's just like business is leaving and then the Willow Tree article, and Willow Tree has been eyeing this property for years. That's not anything that's going on with the city. That's a, we, our long-term vision plan, we're, we want to be at this location. So I just think if we start telling, you know, just making sure that we are just stating facts or the whole story, even if part of the facts is, because I didn't support West Second Street, so the four of you did, but as a whole, that project could have continued.
And I certainly hear the various perspectives on that specific project, but I think in general, we need to recognize, and, and we need to be better about educating the public on the importance of some of these economic development initiatives and the value that they do provide to us in terms of the revenue and allows us to then pay for what we consider our priorities. And unfortunately, I think a lot of those things end up getting a bad name with, with some parts of our community. And, I mean, there's a balance. I mean, there's certainly projects that I don't want to support. And West Second was one that I cer, I paused and I didn't, you know, I, I really strug with that one. And ultimately, you know, in a way, it probably ended, I think, I think there's a lot that we can do with that property. And it was, that's a whole nother ball to get into. But I just, I think that we need to really be recognizing, you know, the, the value of these economic development initiatives that they, that they provide for this long-term sustainability of our budget. We can't keep going back to our residents and to our certain sectors of our businesses for these dollars. Because in the end, I'm concerned that they will ultimately be, be hurt in a way that it's going to even be less revenue and it, and it's just a depleting source. So, and people are going to feel like it's even less affordable to live here. And we're going to be having to even look at these housing affordability programs even more aggressively because we're just creating an environment that's even more and more challenging to afford to live in.
Maybe. But then that could also not happen. I live, I live in the-
It's hypotheticals here. I guess we, I guess we like to speculate.
I'm an eternal optimist. I think the good is always going to work out.
Oh, no, it's definitely getting more expensive to live here, and that's going to continue. And we know what the projections look like for who would be able to live here if things continue. And hopefully, the equity initiative that Mr. Murphy is working on will help us balance and make decisions based on, you know, whether an investment actually hinders or creates equity and whether the dollar amount and the value of that would outweigh the potential harm in that. Because those are the, all the factors that we would need to look at.
So back to Mr. Murphy's list, though, I guess, we, are we, are we agreeing that right now, we're not going to push any further on the city schools additional 500? It sounds like three of us are there.
I'm, I'm there.
Mike, you're there? You're there? Okay, four of us are there.
Not pushing on the schools.
Dr. Bellmy, your four colleagues said that they would not add 500,000 to the schools. You're on the record otherwise. I appreciate that. On the affordable housing, it's not clear to me where you are on that. And, and at the risk of making myself even more, or even less popular than usual tonight, I might ask you, would you consider that it's not additive? And that within the 10.3 million dollars that are already allocated to affordable housing, which seems more than sufficient in any one given year, that if you really want a flexible pool, that it is carved out from within the four allocations?
And how would you carve that out?
That seems, yeah.
I would love to do that, but I want to understand the impact that's having. Are you going to then just?
It needs to be, I'm just, there's a lot of hard decisions that went into getting the budget to this size. If you wanted to go to 11.3, there's going to be a lot of work involved in that. My question is, will you entertain, even as an alternative, the idea that 10.3 is already the right and highest investment? Or do you want a proposal that goes to 11.3?
Mr. Murphy, that sounds like, I mean, just speaking for myself, I think that's a great way to go because the public, just the way that this, you know, the framing of this just has happened the last couple of weeks and is that, is this idea of zeroing out and that it's, it has, I think it's misrepresented a little bit, the doubling of the commitment toward affordable housing, but also the uniqueness of these two projects that have been sitting for a long time and that this council has decided to also change policy about. Because it was always previously that CRHA and Friendship Court were independent agencies. So stepping across the line and saying, we're going to help you fund these directly rather than through redevelopment or whatever, big, big, big changes. But I think the public needs to understand that we have doubled our commitment toward affordable housing. And if you could find the flexible dollars from that whole doubling, that would be great. That would be, and maybe it means that you have to shave a little bit here or there and those are, that, that has to do with how you're relating to the other, to the applicants. But it, that does seem clearer to the public about what we're doing.
So I have, I would like for us to leave the money. Those other, the nonprofits have been able to apply for funding for years where CRHA and PHA haven't been the priority or this level of development. And unless the Planning Commission was saying, take some money away to give, I think they were saying in addition to, and if we're not willing to fund in addition to, then I would ask you all to look at the fact that these organizations have been funded for a long time and funded in ways that we are not sure of what the actual outputs all the time of that funding is. And so I think we need to be more strategic and make sure that the money, when we're spending taxpayers' money, that we are spending it efficiently. This has been a conversation that I've been having all year. And until we're sure about, that we're clear that we have new MOUs in place, maybe this is something that we look at, at surplus time, when we can work with these organizations and say that these are now on new expectation. But I think it's difficult for, I mean, that we shouldn't take away from, because I would, or I would like to know what that taken away could potentially look like before we, you know, just say, yeah, take it from, from that. Even if we're doubling it, it's be, or the amount is now the 10.3, it's because that's the need.
Madam Mayor, just a, just a thought from Mr. Murphy. I guess, based on just what you said, which is kind of putting all this together into that 10.3, I, I guess my question would be to put it back to you, which would be if this council did say, we want to contingently say that the surplus, any surplus that comes up at the end of this year, we will allocate almost entirely to affordable housing writ large. How would that, could we then say, we will actually create an affordable, a flexible pool from the 10.3? We will then bring in a, you know, hopefully two, three, four, whatever it'll be from the surplus and then put that into the general pool? But it would allow us to still have the flexible? I mean, how many, there are four drivers in the 10.3?
You've got 5.9 million for Friendship Court, 3 million for the Housing Authority, 900 and, 900,000 supplemental rental assistance, 500,000 for rehab.
So I guess the question would be, if you kind of spread the contingency among those drivers and you said, look, we're, we are going to make a policy, we're going to dedicate the surplus to affordable housing, it's going to cause a little bit of uncertainty among the four or five drivers here, but we're pretty sure that all of you are going to get 80, 90% of what you already need. And then the extra, you know, 10, 15, whatever, will, will come from the surplus at the end of the year. The question would be, could you implement that?
I would argue also that they can all apply for the flexible money, too, right?
That's true. They could all apply for the flexible money. That's true.
And I'm with you with the exception to, I think that we should put a fixed amount of the surplus being completely dedicated, because I, I do have concerns about not putting something towards a retirement fund. I think there's other things that I just wouldn't want us to be completely ignoring for the financial health.
But this is what we did this, and that makes sense. But this, but, you know, I think what we're doing is we're speaking to the, the urgency of the affordable housing issue in this community. And we are saying, this is above, that's why we have changed our policy about CRHA and PHA. That's a big deal this last year. And so we would be saying, no, this is really, I mean, I, but you're right. I mean, we, there might be something that would come up by the end of the year or some crisis that we would still need the surplus.
Exactly. And if we, if we say that we want to put the surplus, that was literally going to be my point. We say we're going to put a certain amount of the surplus towards specifically affordable housing. There's two things that come to mind. One, we don't know what the surplus is going to be. It could come back lower. I mean, you are the ones who are kind of saying, let's be cautious. So if the surplus comes back lower than it has been in years past, and that means that would affect the bottom line and the amount that both the Housing Authority as well as PHA would receive. And then secondly, in the event that we do have some crisis or something in which we need to allocate the funds of the surplus for, then what do we do? We come back and we're having to have a very difficult decision again. And history has shown us that normally the people who get the short end of the stick is the ones who are looking for the housing dollars, the affordable housing dollars. So I just, I don't know if I feel comfortable, not I don't know, I don't quite feel comfortable looking at it that route, because I don't think it's a defined measure for success.
But we're saying as a baseline, though, that the very least we're doing is more than doubling the, the spending on affordable housing in this budget and, and, and looking ahead. So that, that's the worst case scenario. And then what we're saying is on top of that, that then we would also dedicate surplus dollars. So I just want to be clear, that, that, that's what we're, that's the baseline here.
I do have a question. Could we find this million dollars for the CAF by, by looking at the other non-bonded projects? Not looking at housing, but seeing if there's any way to take a little bit here, there and everywhere to actually cobble together a million dollars to dedicate to the housing fund?
That'd only be ballparking, but there is literally, you'd have to take every project but that on the cash side. Because the, the cash side is really the affordable housing stuff plus the parks and rec, right? I mean, it's, it's at or near a million dollars. I mean, it's, it's at or near a million dollars. So, unless you wanna wipe the slate clean on that, I'm not looking at the sheet right now. We could, but we can go backwards. There's not really much on the cash side.
We do have, you know, there's, there's, for Parks and Recreation, there's 625,000 total for FY20. The other governmental projects, it's 1.0, almost 1.1 million. I just wanna see if there's any other way to, to figure out a way to find... Because I think what, what is of concern is that it's not clear that we're gonna dedicate the 1 million dollars if you just say, "We can find it within the 10.3 million dollars of the housing". I mean, is it?
I would say it's what, half of all remaining projects? Is that about right, yes? About 2 million altogether?
Yeah, there's, because there's two part, the downtown mall infrastructure and the school small cap, which are both on the cash funded side, have dedicated revenue sources to them. So, if we did, if we remove those, we'd have to move.
Maybe we need to move on from this for a minute and just see, going back to them, what are our revenue possibilities?
Okay. Well, I do wanna talk about one more expense that you all consider. We gave you some data on, if you go to the next slide quickly, Ryan. And that is that we already built the budget around some changing parameters in the CHAP program. And I know that Mayor Walker worked with Commissioner Divers about two additional scenarios. So, we do need to get your feedback too about whether you want to go further than the original budget proposes with these scenarios that are suggested or put forward here. So...
I'll just say that option two is actually option one and option one is actually option two. So, it's at the, you know, the $25,000 full relief was the original one that I requested numbers on. And then, option two, option one, this 20, up to $20,000 full relief going down is what I just asked for because of how tight the, how tight things were, were looking for, for the budget. And just, you know, my advocating for the full re- relief. We have definitely put money in affordable housing, but one thing that has been consistently happening in, in the city is the displaced, you know, homeowners being displaced. We, you can look on, you know, websites, ask the city for data. I sign, you know, the loan agreements. I mean, I've signed a lot of them over the past year of homes being sold and just looking at this as a way to keep low-income homeowners in a program that, when, was it 2006 when the program originally started? And no changes have been made to it from, since 2006. So, as we see in these categories and, you know, up to 519 homeowners would, you know, and would receive the benefit of the, you know, full relief. And then, the additional homeowners will receive a grant amount of $1,755,000, or $375,000 off of the second half of, of their taxes.
And this is based on the assumption of our current real estate tax rate for these estimates?
What is the, the 285,000, the, the part that's in the budget, what does that?
That is-
What does that do in terms of relief?
Todd, put that in the budget. It would have, oh, you wanna answer? Okay. I got it.
It moves the current program from a income threshold of 50,000 to 65,000.
Yeah, anybody at $12,500 in income would get full relief. And then the, you know, the, the lump tiers would be above that.
And was that new? Did we, did we have full relief in the CHAP program?
No, last year, we changed the CHAP program and we put in the, I think it was $1,000, 750 or $500 tier. So, last year was the first year that we changed it.
And how many families benefit from the 285,5?
Oh, let's see. I think we're projecting 1,185 anticipated relief recipients, which would be an increase of 157 over last year. And that's, you know, that's all from the, that's really all from the top end from moving the threshold up, the income threshold up to 65,000. We would just be, you know, redistributing at the bottom end.
That's what's been budgeted.
Yes.
These are just additional.
Todd, just because, you know, our slide here, even with the richer benefit, right, is only in the 900s, you're blending both the relief programs when you give the 1,185 number, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So, could you give a clean CHAP number so the council understands?
The, you're saying the clean?
Number of households.
Oh, sure, sure. For CHAP, under the city manager's proposed budget, we're expecting about 819 relief recipients.
Right. So, 98 more people in this budget and then another 70 on top, right, with the new criteria that have been worked on.
Mr. Divers, you know, is this a, is this a pretty typical, like, among Virginia cities? I don't mean to ask you, but to do zero, to do zero?
Nobody else does CHAP. Nobody in the state that I'm aware. Maybe one locality in Northern Virginia. Most have a real estate tax relief for elderly and disabled.
Right, right.
But this is unique.
No, and I certainly support this program in the way that it's been presented. I guess my pause about taking it even further is, I think we're gonna have to go to real estate taxes to do it in terms of revenue and I think that can be defeating. It's just like you're fighting yourself at that point.
I, I'm not prepared to go beyond the, what's been proposed in the budget. I think moving forward, year from year, we can gradually increase this and, and see how it affects us fiscally. But I think we've done a big jump already from last year to this year. And, and just let's see how we can progress. But right now, there's a lot going on in this budget and I, I would like to stay at the 285,5.
I'm open to going for it.
And I'll just say again that in terms of homeowners who are long-term homeowners, when you're talking about these income ranges that we're looking at, is, what, what we're saying is, we're, we understand the challenges that someone making $25,000 or less per year would have in paying their taxes annually based on the assessments that have increased and the tax rate that are increased, that have increased over the years. So, again, we are talking about the lowest homeowners in the city. And I would rather, I know last year, we talked about expanding the fifth tier, but even if we remove the last tier, which we brought the 375 back 'cause we had removed the 375 last year and saved some dollars there before we introduced the higher, up to the 65,000. Todd, you, I don't know if that face was a question or?
No, it's 'cause I can't see.
Okay.
I'm nearly blind.
So, I would rather for us to look at removing, you know, going back to the original amounts, keeping the up to, what is it, 375 for the house value? And it was $50,000?
The, the, the top income?
The income.
It was 50,000 before, yeah.
And then, work on those four relief categories and expand the relief than the way that it's presented in the city manager budget at that time, if there's not support for every, every avenue. And we have to keep in mind that we're talking about an area median income of $89,600. Am I right? 'Cause I have so many numbers going around my head right now.
Just depends on how many people live in the house.
And so, those income relief brackets for the, the homeowners who would be most challenged by the things that have happened over the years and this not changing since 2006 is what I'm asking you all to look at.
I just feel like I'm, I'm missing something, but you said the CHAP relief, people for the planned budget, it's 819 families. And now, this, this is a different version than what we had in, in print. This is showing 917 additional recipients are getting this?
That is-
Or is it a net of the 819? 'Cause I'm having a hard time understanding for additional 100 families, it would be this much of a cost?
No, I think-
Is it, so?
The vice mayor and I are doing the very same math right now.
Yeah, I don't know. That's, I can tell you the, that my projections under, for the CHAP program, under the parameters outlined in the budget, we're expecting about 819 applicants. And then, for real estate tax relief, we would expect about 366 for a total of 1,185. Last year, we had 1,028. I, I mean, I don't know whether, this, these have been refined over, over the last month or two and so, maybe that's an old number.
The 917 and the 987 is, that could be compared to the 819? So, does, am I making sense? So, is an additional 917 households is the delta? So, how, how is the delta costing 302,000 between 908, it's like 100, 100 people, 100 households?
No, I've got an extra, almost 200 between FY19 and FY20 with these changes.
But that's also taking into account the real estate tax relief, right? And the number of people you think may come over to the CHAP program.
Correct, correct.
So, then we would save money with the grant amounts.
Save money on the real estate, but you'd spend more money on CHAP.
On the CHAP, yes.
If I could throw a wrinkle in here, we've done nothing to address the rent relief program that my office also runs. You know, maybe if you wanna piecemeal it, we could do this this year and then we can talk about rent next year. Because there are some things we could do that would help a lot of folks on that.
For those who weren't homeowners.
Right.
Right, right.
Can you say a little bit more about that?
Oh, I didn't mean.
Sorry.
There's another program that we administer that if, if you make less than $50,000 a year and, and your asset threshold is below a certain amount, the city will pay a portion of your rent. It's a, it's a fairly lengthy application process. It's up to a certain amount of rent that you've paid out of pocket. And that has not been changed in years either.
Okay.
We can talk about that.
How many, how many people take advantage of that?
Oh, 500, 600.
Wow.
Wow, okay.
How much do we spend? What's the?
Ballpark.
Wow.
Oh, gosh. It's, it's expensive.
We should get annual reports on that.
Between 600,000, yeah. Ballpark. I, I mean, it's in the, it's in the budget and the CAF.
This is what, you know, just kind of like a general thing. It's, we, you know, we hear all the time from the, you know, "You all aren't doing anything", and this sorts of things, and there, there are these very well-intentioned, you know, programs that we do and that are kind of baked in the cake. And I feel like we should communicate as best as we can to the public.
To that point, if I may, I think in our annual housing report that we get, I've, I've never seen that, rent relief. I've, I've, we always look at what the CAF does in terms of contributing to our different nonprofit providers, but I've never, I've never seen a report on the rent relief.
I can-
That would be really important, I think, to integrate with a full housing report as to what we actually do for our, for our residents. Anyway, thank you for letting us know.
Sure.
Wow, okay. Anyway.
This is clear as mud.
So, we're just going down the line then about whether we, we're gonna go above or stay the same as what's proposed or what?
That's right. We're gonna lock the doors until we have your answers, yeah.
The upper income threshold was proposed to go up to 65.
If you could just give us the numbers on if we maintained it at the $50,000 income limit?
Okay.
And give us options on these, and I can send you an email later too?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
All right.
So, schools, I'm gonna do more work on this. And on the CAF, you wanna see it both ways, adding and carving it out?
See, added a million dollars.
I want a million, I want a million dollars of the CAF.
I, I heard the mayor question whether we need to do the flexible fund in this particular year. I heard the vice mayor and Ms. Galvin say they'd like to see the flexible fund added. I guess I'm not clear on Dr. Bellamy and Mr.-
Yes, I'd like to see it.
Okay.
But, but you asked another question. Is it within the budget that we're talking about?
That's right.
Yes.
I, I don't think we need to go from 10.3 to 11.3.
And I think we're saying the same thing.
Well, I'd like to see that.
But I'd like to see how we're doing it.
Of course.
Yes, okay.
It's just like, I mean, like, I understand we've made strides and I understand and like, we want, we say we wanna do things. Like, my family, if the real estate tax gets increased, like, we're not rich. Wouldn't, like, we have three kids, another one coming, like, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna be affected by this. We eat out on the mall, we eat out at restaurants all the time, like, we would have to pay our fair share. And I just wonder, like, at what point, if we say we wanna do all of these things, at what point do we say that we have to share the responsibility? And if we wanna address these issues, we're gonna have to do more. Like, but we just, it's just like, we're, we say that we want to go to the next level. We wanna address everyone's needs, but then we're reluctant to actually, if we have to go another level higher, then we have to do it.
What we're saying, though, Wes, is that taxes, real estate taxes have already effectively gone up because of the rising property tax, the property assessments. And that's why it's already, it's gonna be a tax on a tax. That's all we're talking about now. We're concerned about that.
But we're gonna be affected by that tax as well. My assessments went up as well.
It was one of the higher amounts of increase from year to year.
And that's why we have the program. If you're specifically talking about if that population from Tenth and Page.
But there are a lot of other people who are on the cusp, may not fulfill the needs of those programs that are also gonna be feeling the pressure to leave the city because they can no longer afford to pay their taxes.
But what I feel like, when we say certain things, like, when you throw out a neighborhood like Tenth and Page, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like the underlying message that's being sent is that we're saying that, well, there's low-income families who are going to be negatively impacted. And if that is the case and we're talking about that population from those families in Tenth and Page, we have a program to address those same families. If it's other individuals who may be over a certain threshold, then we're all going to have to share this responsibility. It's not a burden. It's a responsibility for us to look out for our fellow man and woman who live in this city to make sure that everyone has affordable housing because we love the city of Charlottesville. And if we do, then we owe it to all of the citizens here to have a fair shot at fair housing.
And I, can I?
Sure, go ahead. I'm finished.
I haven't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead. No.
Did I? And I would ask, just to look at again, we, I know the Planning Commission made this recommendation, but we also, from the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, we've had nonprofits advocating, just as individuals were advocating from the nonprofit world, when we were looking at ABRT revamp. And so, for me, I would like to know what better use of a million dollars would be to make sure that people, one of the most challenging aspects of maintaining their home was funded, where it was absolutely, "I'm not gonna look at this", to where after the advocacy of the nonprofits in the area who are advocating for funds for affordable housing, you would be willing to look at those. So, I would just ask you all to look at those by Tuesdays. But now, I think we need to go down this list and then open up for public comment.
The one thing with the ABRT process, those that we've given everyone a year to kind of understand that we are looking at this process. I think that some folks in this, in, who are applying for these funds, there just isn't another avenue that exists for them to get these funds 'cause they're not part of our ABRT process. And so, they just feel like we just went from getting, knowing that we have an opportunity to apply for these funds to, to, to not having any opportunity to even put an application and to have your, their hat in the ring. And I just, I just feel that, that's a short, short one-way for them.
But if you remember the budget meeting, the council meeting with ABRT- But if you remember the budget meeting, the council meeting with ABRT, they were unaware that they had a year. So, I'm just, if, whether it's the best use of taxpayers' money, and I hope taxpayers who are listening are asking those questions, whether we're using the money and what we're funding is the best use of your money because that's not being asked. So, where money is being funded, this money is going out, is the return worth the return on that investment, worth it? And I think you all should ask a lot of questions and dig, dig very deeply. So, tax increase, right?
So, Mayor Walker?
Hold on, Ms. Galvin, Ms. Galvin.
I just want to, I just want to make sure we were going to go into the tax increase, because I wanted, I knew that you had a notification deadline if we were going to change lodging taxes, correct?
It's already been advertised, so, for the meeting tonight. I'm sorry?
Is there another chance to advertise for an increase?
If we have enough time, you can advertise for April first.
We just need to have an additional public hearing on April first.
Correct.
Okay.
And if we know on Tuesday, then we can do that.
Wait, I thought we already advertised for everything we needed to.
We did for the proposed budget, but if you're going to change it, going up, for instance...
Going up more than the one percent, one per penny?
Well, I don't know what your proposals are. But we would have to re-advertise, and we have a seven-day requirement, so which we could do if we know by Tuesday for the April first public hearing. We would schedule a public hearing on that night.
So, as luck would have it, I'd love to start with lodging, if it's okay with you, Mayor Walker.
That's fine.
So...
So, I'll start.
Yes, ma'am.
I support the lodging tax increase.
Thank you.
I will support that.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it. I just, if we talk about the other taxes, though, and we start messing around with the different numbers and the other taxes, I'm, I'm looking at whether or not we need to have another one percent increase in the lodging tax. And the reason why, but it's all related to what our final balances we're looking for. Is it three point one, is it four point one? I'm still not clear on that.
Understood.
But I'm perfectly comfortable with the one percent lodging tax.
Yes.
All right. I'd like to go to real estate next, if that's okay. This budget is not built around an increase in real estate tax. The primary reason for that, from my perspective, was, I believe, as cited. I think that in a year where, you know, the average increase is nearly eight percent, and people in residential units are at eight point seven percent, the compounding effect of adding to the formula and going from ninety-five to the ninety-seven that we advertised was perhaps more onerous in my estimation than the meals tax. So, the question is, this budget is not built around the idea that there should be an increase in real estate. You have advertised the possibility that you can do anything between that zero up to two cents. And I'd like to know if there's anybody who would like to add real estate revenue through the form of taxation to the budget.
So, at this time, I do not want to raise the real estate taxes. But if that were the only way to fund the option presented as two for CAF, then I would entertain it. But I think that we could get this funded through the other two increases. So, with that said, no, at this time, I would like to not have to increase the real estate taxes.
I'm firmly no.
Same.
I would raise it a cent.
Oh, I would raise it a cent.
Okay. And meals tax, which we have spent some time talking about. And so, the premise here, I know there's lots of different lenses on this. Primarily, there is the thought that, number one, where it situates us with regard to the independent cities in the state of Virginia would be that even after one cent, we would be tied for between nineteenth and twenty-seventh out of the thirty-eight independent cities, right? So, right now, we're below all of them, down in the bottom quartile of all cities in Virginia on meals tax. That meals revenue has, in fact, grown every year per penny, not just in total, but for each cent on the meals tax. And so, while I realize that there are individual folks who've talked about, hey, it's been a hard year for me, or our industry, the fact of the matter is that general receipts are up year over year, across the board. There's been no time that I'm aware of that there's a dip in the real, in the meals tax. I think that, you know, depending on whether you're looking at the Consumer Expenditure Survey from Bureau of Labor as a factor of expenditures or income, people would vary their arguments about whether meals is regressive or not. However, the raw impact of meals tax on people's budgets when we do the one cent increase is a difference, regardless of whether you're in the lowest income at a dollar twenty-five a month, or a dollar twenty-three a month, to the highest incomes in the city at six seventy-three a month. And I do think that over the course of a year, that fourteen dollars to eighty-three dollars was a fair and reasonable way for the city to be at the middle of all their peers on meals tax and generate about two hundred, or two and a half million dollars worth of revenue to fund the affordable housing that I felt like was clearly expressed as a priority by the council and the community. So, that's why it's in here in the way that it is right now. And I'll leave it to you all to weigh in about your thoughts on that.
So, I support the meal tax increase.
This is one, I'm just, kind of like you were on the, on the real estate. I just, there's a lot of stuff we had questions about tonight. I'm still trying to digest and understand what our options are. I'm, I don't, I don't feel like I firmly want to support it yet.
I'm firmly opposed. And the, I get, real quick, like, the reason that I support the lodging is because that increase in cost will fall on people who aren't Charlottesville residents, the people who are visiting here. And as long as it's not going to have a negative effect on people coming here, I mean, I'd be concerned if we were talking about something that would actually turn people away. Or, I mean, we did have the gentleman come and speak to us last council meeting who was concerned about this from the industry. But I, I'm, I'm not that worried about it actually leading to a downturn. But I am worried about increasing the general cost of living here. And I, I think the one thing would be that if you looked at all these peer localities in that list, I would guess that the bulk of them have not seen the rise in assessments that we have. Charlottesville's probably, I just would guess, I may not, that may not be accurate. But I would guess that you haven't seen the economy and the assessments generate this much increased revenue and also an effective tax increase on all these homeowners that you've had here compared to all these other peer localities. So, that's our baseline, like, we're looking at that much revenue having already been generated for all these other priorities. So, that, that's a long-winded way of saying that.
Happy to analyze that if you like.
I think it'd be interesting.
I know that what we do analyze for you all each year is that Charlottesville, at the point where I bought a house in Charlottesville many moons ago, was it a dollar eleven? And then it went down, 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 down to ninety-five. And other localities have all gone up since the recession.
Right.
And since I missed one factoid in my description of this, I would say thirty-five percent of this meals tax increase will be borne by visitors and people from outside the city.
The only caution I have about this exercise, which I knew we were going to do, is that on Monday, we are going to be listening to the public. And that's why I'm just, I struggle to, I mean, I want to be able to give the opportunity for people to weigh in before some of us are really anchoring ourselves because I think there's, there's voices to be heard, and so...
That's true. But if I find that we're at a significant gap, we need to start working now about how that gap is filled and present you with a variety of solutions for you to weigh in on when we next sit together.
Okay.
I'm, I'm prepared for a half-cent increase in the meals tax. And my rationale is that I don't think we should be going to the very same sector of our economy, the one industry of our economy, to supply all our increased needs for affordable housing and public education. We did that last time in 2015. And you can kind of tell, I'm trying to spread the responsibility. Public education has historically been funded by our real estate taxes, and that is something that the entire community is responsible for. And I don't think it should be something that is strictly rests on the backs of our restaurant owners. And that's, that's it.
Well, Ms. Galvin, I appreciate you taking that position, but I just have a question. If it were to go through as you stated, we have three of us who said that we would be in favor for the real estate tax, so that would be one cent going up. All of us have stated that we will be, we will be in favor of adding a cent on the lodging tax.
Really quick, we only had two of you saying yes to the real estate firmly. Mayor Walker did not.
And I definitely wouldn't support it if we were only bringing increase in the meal tax by a half percent.
Okay, so, so in a dream world, if it went that way, just as you were describing it, all of the burden wouldn't go on the, it wouldn't just be on the meals tax. It would be shared.
Yeah, according to my scenario, right.
So, if it's, if it's shared, then my question would be, why wouldn't we go up one whole cent? Because if you're giving a half a cent...
Then you wouldn't need to, because the one cent on the meals tax covers it. That's why they have the balanced budget. And I'm just emphasizing the tax responsibility by raising the real estate tax.
If I can, I mean, the budget is balanced with the one cent, the two point four eight eight out of meals, and the eight sixteen on lodging. What I heard was, let's, if we can add a million to, to the flexible funds in the CAF. And so, if that's the one cent you propose on real estate, then I'm still short two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
I thought we discussed a ten and...
That's why I was talking about two percentage on the lodging tax. That's what I was getting at. When you do, if you did two percent lodging, one cent on the real estate, and a half cent on the meals tax, you get three point six five million dollars.
For four point three million in expenses, so we're seven hundred in the whole, right?
And then that, that would be something that we have to figure out with how, what's the word, fungible? I don't know.
But the CAF piece, there's two scenarios. One is that we're saying we have a limit of the ten point five, and we're going to work within that, and you're going to show us what that looks like.
Understood, yeah.
And this gives you a little bit more money to actually put in the CAF as an, as an anchor, the combination I just put out there.
But they still would be short seven hundred thousand.
Their staff thinks they can find the balance.
That's not what they say.
Is that accurate, staff?
We don't know how we would do it.
No, that's not what they say.
So, Wes, what is your position on this one?
Well, yeah, like, I'm, I'm fine with us, as presented, going up one cent on the meals tax. But essentially, we would not, it wouldn't go through because as I'm hearing from Mayor Walker, she's not comfortable with it being half a cent. And then, Ms. Galvin, you're not willing to go up over a half a cent.
No, what I say was that I'm going to support an increase, hopefully, what is in the balanced budget. But if it was only half of that, I would still support that. I'm not going to replace that with a real estate tax increase because I don't, the rationale behind that doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, I'm confused, yeah.
Circling back, what I've heard that there are enough votes for is essentially two million dollars in taxes instead of three point three million right now. And primarily, or entirely, out of meals and lodging, so.
But you're still short.
And that's prior to...
So, you're, you're basing that on a one percent lodging and the, and the half percent meals tax?
That's right, yes.
And then nothing else.
That's what's been agreed by three people.
Correct.
But not necessarily three.
I'm not saying it's the end. There's going to be plenty more discussion. But as a starting point for our team, what I've heard is at least three people would go up half a cent, maybe more, or maybe a few less, one less would do the whole cent. Everybody would do lodging, and real estate probably doesn't have the votes. So, what I have is three point three million in revenues in there right now in our budget, and solid support for two million. So, I'm going back, looking at one point three million, plus or minus CHAP and the CAF.
So, and that's what I mean, like, we're willing, we're willing to cut the CHAP and the CAF, which is literally like, we're, in my opinion, like, we're cutting off your nose despite... What did you just say, Mr. Murphy?
We're going to, we're going to fund option one or two tight.
What, what did he, no, what did Mr. Murphy just say?
We're funding what we've agreed to do, what you've got in your budget.
What you said was...
We've agreed to do what you're doing in your budget proposal.
Yeah, I know, I'm just advocating.
Yeah, I believe the mayor has asked Commissioner Diver for one more scenario. And that is, don't change the income threshold, but let's give a richer benefit to people who are fifty thousand and lower instead of taking up the income threshold to sixty-five in this year.
Yeah.
Am I getting it right?
But you're still staying at two eighty-five five?
No, we don't know what that number is yet.
Oh.
But probably not because that full relief category will be added.
Changing a community is painful. It's hard, but like, we have to be willing to do...
So, can we just open it up for people who stayed and make sure we have time for public comment? So, if you would like to speak during, now, for public comment, if you could just go to the mic. And hopefully, thank you all for staying with us through this.
And Madam Mayor, I'm going to have to leave in a couple minutes, because I was going to eight, but...
I'm Tom Eckman, I'm part of Impact. And I've been on the strategy team for affordable housing for three years, working with the county. And I share your frustration with the county because we've been working on them to, to really put some sizable amount of money in the housing fund. We did all sorts of researches on housing funds and their use throughout the country. And they can leverage the money that's in the fund by up to like ten times to build affordable housing. And Impact was instrumental in getting this housing fund going a while back. And there's a lot of things that have been done in the city with that housing fund. We commend you on what you're doing with the ten point three million and working with public housing, what you're doing with Friendship Court. But these are longer-range projects. They're going out to, you know, seven years before your, people are going to be getting into it. There's a real need in this area for real affordable housing. Between Charlottesville and the airport, there's four thousand people now that are paying fifty percent of their income to pay for housing. That's a serious problem. You know, they're having to make tough choices. Putting the one point five five million into an affordable fund gives you some flexibility so that people can actually renovate houses, to, to put people into housing that they can afford. I work with the homeless, and AIM and Pachim started up a program for the population that's fifty-five and over. And they've looked at, how can we get guys into traditional housing? So, AIM's putting up like five hundred months, dollars rent and five hundred dollars deposit. And they've already moved, this was two months ago, they moved five men into traditional, transitional housing, doing that because they could afford to pay. But, but the number of affordable units that people can actually find in Charlottesville aren't there. That's, that's the limit. So, the people are struggling to find places to live. So, consequently, they move out in Flavana and places like that. And they got to drive miles to get in here, which affects them economically. It also clogs up the roads. We need to do something in Charlottesville. And I agree, we need to get the county to do something, and Impact's been working really hard. And I can't tell you how many supervisor meetings we've gone to, and we've met with supervisors. And we need to work on the county. And as far as the university is concerned, we agree with you. We're, we're going to start meeting with people from UVA. If you look at the number of... If you look at the number of additional students they get each year, these are people are taking housing, they have some accountability in this, and they have lots of money. If they could put 50 million into a fund where you could have 0% interest, you could get developers to do things, and I applaud you with what you're doing on the zoning. If we could make zoning more better to get, to encourage affordable housing and densification in various areas in Charlottesville, we could really do something about this, so.
Thank you.
I encourage you for what you're doing, because I'm really proud of the city, and the 10.3 million dollars is incredible, so keep up the good work.
Thanks.
And thank you for your advocacy with the county and the university.
Hi, my name's Aaron Winston, I'm an organizer with the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition, and showing up for racial justice Charlottesville. I'd just like to observe that there has been a little bit of, I don't know, for lack of a better word, magical thinking about the prospects for continued funding for affordability in housing. We know that the needs are concrete, you know, that they, at this point, we do not have a specific number, a bondable number, for what it's going to take to meet the need. But I mean, we've done the housing needs assessment, we know what the need is, it's 3,300 units as we speak, 4,000 units in 2020, or excuse me, 2040. So while we don't have a concrete number of what it's going to cost to get to 4,000 units, we know it's going to take money to get there. Those needs will become more concrete as we continue, and it's going to take increased revenue, and that revenue is going to have to come from somewhere. We don't know if there's going to be an economic downturn, so trying to count on some hypothetical surplus at the end of the year is going ahead to meet that very real need, I think is Pollyanna-ish at best. I mean, we really do need to be serious about the commitment that it's going to take to reach that number. I think that, you know, increasing revenue takes political risk, you know, that's hard to do, but we need this council to show real leadership in tackling this crisis. If that means at the end of the year we do have a surplus, we can come back around and reconsider what our funding priorities are going to be at the end of the year. But in the world, economic world that we live in, counting on ongoing surpluses to meet these needs is, I think, foolhardy at best. So we really would like to see a serious commitment to building a foundation, a revenue foundation, that will be an ongoing commitment to ensure permanent affordability in housing in Charlottesville. If that means a lodging tax, great, if that means a meals tax, great, but we have to be realistic about what the needs are and what the city is prepared to do to tackle them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Payne, City Resident, I just want to interject some context of another city going through a revenue battle right now, Richmond, Virginia, where Mayor LeVar Stoney has proposed increasing the meals tax to 7.5%, and that's just one of his proposed tax increases. Richmond has higher rising assessments than Charlottesville does.
Real estate tax, not meals tax?
No, it's meals tax.
No, he proposed, he probably proposed both, but meals tax was, I think, one of them. But the real estate tax in Richmond is also, I think, if I'm remembering correctly, over $1.20. Again, Richmond is having faster rising assessments than we are. Granted, it's a very different context, it's a much larger city, but I think it is a valuable context in terms of we're not alone in this, and what is being proposed is actually quite modest, and in some ways, it seems like we're sort of psyching ourselves out and making this a bigger political problem than it actually is. As has been mentioned, raising the meals tax to 6% puts us in line with other cities, and, you know, the conversation is understandably around affordable housing, but I don't think there was enough conversation about the long-term budget picture, which is that even if we can figure out a way to balance the budget and fiscal, for the fiscal or 20 budget without raising taxes or raising them a small amount, we've still got over $100 million in unfunded CIP projects, and I think with this, the schools renovation, that's over $150 million. And I think another part of this that hasn't been discussed enough is the fact that I question the wisdom of continually not meeting department budget requests and having across the core budget cuts. I mean, we're talking about doing a fundamental rewrite of our zoning, and we're not investing in staff capacity and neighborhood development services, and we're proposing not meeting department requests and cutting them? I just don't think we're thinking strategically, long-term, about our budget situation if we're not willing to match other cities in terms of our meals tax, and it's not that scary, and I think the investment is going to outweigh the cost, and as we increasingly become a regional metropolitan area, that means we have to invest more in the city, and we have to have the political will to do it, and I think if we don't have the political will now, the cost will be greater long-term than the cost of looking at a higher meals tax. But that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeanette Koachi, I'm here from Habitat. I first want to just thank both city staff and council members for your incredible commitment towards affordable housing in this budget. I know there's been a lot of silly dialogue back and forth about, about sort of zeroing out the CAF versus, you know, being more prescriptive, but I want to be clear that I and we at Habitat are incredibly grateful for your commitment to affordable housing. I think, you know, our concern is that this budget as it stands seems to reflect to us that there's a gaping hole in the housing ladder in terms of support for affordable homeownership, and I think that, you know, if we're really seeking and talking about true equity, we can't close off that path to affordable homeownership, because we know very well that the market is not going to bear out that opportunity, and again, we are incredibly grateful for the support for Friendship Court and CRHA vouchers, et cetera. But I think, again, cutting off the housing ladder at affordable rentership is not necessarily the right decision. Of course, you know, we are grateful that the council is considering, you know, the 1 million add to the CAF. We would, of course, strongly prefer that that be additive to the 10.3, we certainly don't want to see any money taken away from these other housing initiatives. And again, I don't envy being in your position, dealing with a cash crunch, so, you know, one thing that maybe we could put out there is that if there are any kind of non-cash alternatives, for example, you know, a dedication or donation of city-owned land or lots to affordable homeownership might be an option that can help ease some of this cash crunch. For example, the lots that you all just purchased at Hartman Mill Road for affordable housing, that's an option. But we've received, people have reached out to us to support this request, and so for those of us in the room that are here to support affordable homeownership and a request to fund the CAF, please stand. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Aviis Allen, I'm here with Impact, and of course, I feel as well that the 1 million minimum, preferably 1.55 million, be added to the 10.3 million because it would be flexible dollars. But I want to comment just individually, not speaking for Impact, on the real estate tax increase possibility. I live with my daughter and her fiance, primarily for health reasons, and we've been looking for a year and a half for a house to buy, and because of my health issues, I need to live close to UVA, and I won't go into that, but it's really critical for me to have access to very high-quality healthcare for both my routine doctor appointments and especially emergency care. We have not been able to find a house that's affordable, that is in the city of Charlottesville or even within 20 or 30 or 45 minutes from UVA. So it's really critical, and I urge you to consider that for every cent that you're increasing the real estate tax, that diminishes affordable housing, whether it's in the price that people pay, not so much to get into the house, but then once they're there, and also, of course, as Mr. Murphy has pointed out, the rental market is influenced by the real estate tax. So I would urge you to look elsewhere for streams of revenue that would not impact affordable housing, because that's really Charlottesville residents that would be hurt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sheila Hurlehy, and I serve on the Board of Impact, but I also am employed at Church of the Incarnation where I'm the Coordinator of Justice and Charity, and in that role, I see a lot of people coming to me for emergency financial assistance, and I know a lot of my parishioners who deal with the reality that is struggling to find affordable housing in both the city and the county. I want to reiterate what Tom said, we are at all the county's supervisor meeting and budget meetings as well, we know that this is a regional issue and does not fall exclusively on the city, but I want to encourage you to fund the CAF this year. I am so grateful for the dedication that you guys have put forth and the dedicated funds to the tune of 10.3 million toward public housing, and that is wonderful, but the resource that the CAF provides, the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund provides is the flexibility to respond to upcoming needs and also applicants as they come forward. I know a parishioner of mine who is in his 80s who lives at The Crossings, and there is no way he could afford to be in a one-bedroom apartment in the city of Charlottesville with access to public transportation if that project had not been funded by the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. If you cut off that, that stream of revenue and that flexibility that people can apply for, it will reduce opportunities for places like that and ideas like that to come forward and receive public funding. And just to reiterate, every dollar in an affordable housing fund can be leveraged time and time again, 8.5 times over, and I want to see us be able to use that tool in the city, especially since our housing needs assessment has said we need something like 3,000 new units in the city of Charlottesville to address the need. Is that the right number? Yes. 1,200, my bad, I doubled it, but 1,200 new units in the city. And so, as a representative of the church and a representative of Impact, I would encourage you to address both of those things. Thank you.
I'm Pastor Liz Emery, pastor of New Beginnings Christian Community, which is a special church that reaches out to addicts, alcoholics, and ex-offenders, and 75% of our churches is composed of ex-offenders who are not qualified to get a federal grant or to go to public housing, and their only way that they can live here is through the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund. That's the only way they'll be able to stay in our community, and these are people who work in our community, who cook, who clean, who labor every day in our community and are trying to make a new beginning. And we say that we want to give people post-release start, a new beginning when they get out of jail, but then we find that there's no place for them to live. One of our ministers is paying 85% of his income for a one-bedroom in a trailer, that he shares a bathroom with six other people, and a kitchen with eight other people, and it has mold and no heat and no, no air conditioning, and he has to pay 85% of his income for that, because there isn't any other affordable housing here. And we are desperately in need of affordable housing, so for the people in Charlottesville, for all of those people who get out of jail and prison and want to make a new beginning here, vote for the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund and give them an opportunity, because as good as public housing is and federal vouchers, they don't qualify. The only thing that they qualify is for the affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so the supplement is still being funded at $900,000, so that's separate from this 1 million that we're talking about with CAF. That's still in the budget every year. Yeah. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, Rory Solzenberg, Water Street between first and second. I'm actually not here to talk about housing, I think you guys know how I feel about that, though I can't resist a little bit. It's not just West Second and the big flashy projects that you guys have kind of beaten down and caused to decrease the tax base here, it's every single project you beat down from six units to three units that not only reduces the amount of revenue, but also reduces the amount of units available to everyone who wants to move and live in Charlottesville near jobs, and it's a crisis of everyone making. And Mr. Murphy, there's no definition of regressivity that counts percentage of expenditures. I think it's fairly well-known by most people that rich people have the luxury of saving more, and I don't think it makes sense to exempt that part of their income because of that, but I appreciate your pulling us to listen to the information I sent you and to include that home decile chart, which I think was really helpful, because the numbers we saw in the initial real estate tax projections were at the, for homes in the first, fourth, seventh, ninth, 10th, and 10th deciles. But anyway, I'm here to talk about a line item for solar power generation, it's been cut 25% for the next five years by just $25,000, so not a huge difference for us. There's a fairly big balance in the fund, I understand that it used to be done in-house, and they're realizing it's now cheaper to outsource that, so they're accruing a balance to spend it, so it might be something we could push off to future years, but it doesn't make sense to decrease our five-year projected spending by that long, especially because staff says it pays for itself back, and a new bill passed in the legislature this year that allows retail net metering for schools. So every extra bit of solar power that we generate gets fed back into the grid and offsets the cost of our power, so a pretty small amount, and hope you'll put it back in at least for later years.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, closing public comment, are there any final questions?
Yeah, the format for Saturday would be helpful, just-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so-
Just going to be-
Magic button there, yeah. So we are at the Key Center on Saturday, starting at 1:00 PM.
Oh, 1:00 PM, okay.
Realize that, you know, there won't be nearly enough parking right next to it, but we will have vouchers for folks to park in the Market Street Garage, just a block or two away. I think that the mayor and I discussed that the best way to do this is probably to take down a little bit my original budget presentation from the Monday council meeting on the 7th, so that folks who may be new to the discussion get at least a brief introduction to the budget, and then the bulk of the meeting will be whoever comes to make public comments. So this, this is one of your announced community forums, so I'm imagining that most of the time is the two- to three-minute public comments.
You said one-on-one, it's actually them talking to all of us at once, right?
Yes. People come to the microphone for however long we have.
And just to be clear, the council doesn't enter into any debate, we're just there to listen.
I'll leave that decision to you.
But I mean, that's historically how it's been.
This is one of the venues where we want to hear from as many folks as come out.
Well, hypothetically, though, if we were to finish within an hour, and it would be beneficial for staff, to staff, if we were to kind of further on some of the things we didn't quite get to, I would happily, I would personally entertain that. If you, I feel like we're not where you guys want us to be, like- And I think we're all still thinking and I, I do think Monday does matter, certainly to me, to hear from as many people as we can on Saturday and Monday, especially when we're advertising a, a, a public hearing. But at the same time, if there's time on Saturday and there's some things you would like us to, to discuss and, and flesh out, then I'm, I'm fine with that. But public comment first until everyone's exhausted themselves.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for us?
Thank you all for hanging with us just long.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Be in the john.